Welcome to the Hennepin House Meeting of September 8, 2025. And please remember to silence your phones and devices. And if you have anybody who'd like to speak this evening, and we invite that partly, at the public hearing, please fill out a speaker card that helps us keep track of spelling their name and keeping the minutes straight. And if you have any documents or photographs or other items to share with us, please provide also a copy of the city clerk, so it remains part of the official record. This evening, let's begin with the bonus silence. If you would please join me for a brief bonus silence, and then we'll go with the leadings. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you are able to please stand, we'll give you the leadings.
The lead is to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. Here I am again. I'm here. I'm moved to be here, but we have a very special presentation tonight, so I would like to come to the podium here and bring up our special honoree tonight, Rick McCarver. I'm going to say some last names.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Rick to join me and help everybody to help me honor Rick this evening. I appreciate it. After 27 years of dedicated service, Rick has officially retired. While we are all incredibly happy for him, this moment is also a bittersweet for those who have worked with Rick over the years and have the privilege to work alongside him. Rick began his career with the city in the grounds division, tackling irrigation work with the same work ethic and pride that he carried throughout his career. He later transferred to the water division as a utility technician, and ultimately finished at the wastewater division, which he wore many hats, serving as a utility technician and finally as the line locator. Over the years, Rick earned multiple licenses and certifications, including a backflow certificate, a level three water distribution license, and a wastewater collection C license. These achievements reflect his deep knowledge of professionalism. But if you ask anyone who worked with Rick, it wasn't just his qualifications that made him stand out. Rick will always be remembered as the father figure of the water and wastewater division. High praise. The good new person for guidance, whether you were troubleshooting in tough situations in the field or just making coffee in the break room. He had an incredible way of bringing people together, and still does, and he's still with us, whether it was sharing food. Sharing food, cracking jokes, or simply chatting in. Rick built real camaraderie wherever he went. There's a saying, that people may forget what you said, even what you did, but they'll never forget how you made them feel. And Rick made people feel respected, supported, and part of something bigger. That is a legacy worth celebrating. So Rick, on behalf of the city council and the staff and the entire Mayland community, want to thank you for your 27 years of service, your leadership, your humor, and most of all, your heart. Your presence here will be deeply missed, but your influence will carry on in the team culture that you helped shape. We wish you all the best in this next chapter, maybe filled with family, relaxation, and maybe a few less early mornings. Congratulations, Rick, and enjoy your retirement. And we have a couple of items here, but first, before we get to that, if you have a few words or any words I'd say?
No, I'm good. You said it all. I'll write a copy of that, take it under the wipes.
It's all true. Well, here is the certificate of appreciation for Rick McCarver. And let's see if we can do a little. And yes, they have a guess. All right, this is awesome. This is the power of achievement from the city of Mayland. We appreciate it. I really do. People like you, though, I didn't expect you to just go down. Mayland and any municipal government possible. And I think, you know, we've given up credit and applause to people who work for the public service, but I really appreciate it. I know that everybody here on council knows too. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick McCarver. All right, so we have a public hearing for Rick's work of business. Resolution number 162025, adopting a tentative mode rate for the year 2026, tax year 2025. So I should note that we have Shannon Lewis with us tonight as the assistant city manager, filling in for the city manager. Glad to have you with us. And also Mark Gray, he is on the line, so if we just remember, well, not just for our purposes, because I'm sure there are thousands of people out there on YouTube now listening to us, but if you can lean into your microphone, it helps everybody in the audience better and as well, people who are listening online. So, Shannon, is this going to be you or Mark to take this?
All right. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, yeah, I don't know if I can take this one, but Shannon's going to pick up the rest of the agenda after we do our budget hearing. So thank you, Mayor Barons, and for the visiting tonight, as I'm a father of our own, when this is COVID from home. And on the next slide, so hopefully I'll be back in the office tomorrow or Wednesday. So start off with, on the first slide, this budget calendar, I'd like to remind everybody where we are and how we got here today. Back at the first quarter of the year, we started our staff review of the actual budget. I'm really focusing on the capital budget, putting together our next year's five-year capital plan. Then with the staff review, once that look at that review, there are certain boards that review portions of the capital plan, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Lakes Advisory Board, and Transportation Advisory Board, review the respective capital plans for those budget areas, before it goes to the city council. And the first time the city council saw the overall budget presentation was at our strategic planning session, which took place in May of this year. The strategic planning session, we take, we have every year, we talk about our short, long-term plans for the city, what priorities are for the city council, and how to incorporate the priorities into our overall budget. So based on your direction, we received as a strategic planning session, we moved into budget preparation. So during the summer, early in the summer, the draft budget was presented to the city council. We had our first best workshop in July. That was the general fund budget workshop, which was followed the very next day with the library and art history centers workshop, where they presented their budgets. On July 28, we set the tentative mode rate, which is the mode rate that went out in the emphasis to all property owners in the city. That kind of mode rate was set at the current mode rate. No increase was proposed at that hearing. That's what we're moving forward with at today's hearing. On August 4th, we had another budget workshop. That workshop was for our enterprise and special revenue funds. We talked a little bit about utility and stormwater funds and their budgets and how we're going to be able to go together and move forward. That was followed up on August 11th, a regular meeting where stormwater rates were established for fiscal year 2026, which brings us to tonight, September 8th, where on first reading, we're discussing the military, the budget, and our CIP. That will follow up on September 22nd for final adoption of the military budget and capital improvement program. So we can move to the next slide. Here's a look at our recent trends of revenue this year at those military, which you can see the military across the top of this table. We're projecting a little bit over 4.2 million dollars in general fund revenue, which is below the right-hand corner of this table. Just starting to read each revenue source real briefly, I already talked about this in some detail at our general fund workshop, but just to go over it briefly, our foreign taxes, our property taxes that are paid by business in residence of the city. For FY '26, the foreign taxes are decreasing due to increased taxable values in the city of Mayland, as determined by the Orange County property enforcer. Other taxes and user fees include local option fuel tax, franchise and utility taxes, business tax receipts, formerly known occupational licenses. So we're showing a slight increase from what we're projected to year end '25 into budget year '26 for those other taxes and user fees. For license and permits, these are just what they are, building permits, zoning developer review fees, things like that. They're showing another small increase for fiscal year '26. Interfund revenue is our state and communications sales tax. We also include FEMA in this category, which does vary year to year as we discuss year to year outcome, all the way back to Irma, which we're still awaiting some reimbursements on. Excuse me. Due to the timing of these reimbursements, we don't actually accrue pending FEMA reimbursements. Right now, what we're waiting on is Hurricane Milton, until they're obligated by FEMA. So it's not considered measurable, portable, measurable and available. It's defined by generally accepted accounting principles, so it's not included in our projected revenue until we have a little bit better information from FEMA and when that's going to become available. Charges for services, those include our EMS transport fees, our parks direct user charges. This is a slight decrease comparing to our projected '25 revenues. This is mostly due to our police special detailing unit. I believe we talked about this during our general fund budget workshop. Special detailing units are typically city of Orlando or Orange County, needs assistance with special events, whether they be football games, soccer game, concert, a large special event, where they'll call in other police agencies from around Central Florida to assist with these larger events. In these cases, we go ahead and pay the special detail rate for our officers that are going to be attending those events, then we provide that to Orange County or the city of Orlando, and they directly reimburse us. So it has no net budgetary impact, so we're tracking that separately. So it does, that shows a decrease here, but it's really no net impact on the budget. Jumping to fines and forfeitures, they are just basically court fines and forfeited property from folks that are arrested with property. Red light cameras were included in here, but they were eliminated in November of 2024, which affected fiscal year 2025. However, with the elimination of the red light camera, we also had a commensurate reduction in the operating side for the enforcement of that. So that was again sort of a zero-sum game, although there is a decreased revenue. There's also decreased operating expenses that were associated with that. Lastly, we have our miscellaneous income, which includes investment income. It also includes grants, penalties, assessments, administrative revenues, and interfund transfers and contributions. This increased partially due to the council approval of the administrative allocation charges for the stormwater and CRA that we discussed as part of the general fund budget balancing process. I'm going to get into that in just a few minutes. Also, we have the repayment of the CRA advance, which we discussed in some detail at our general fund budget workshop. This general fund advanced several million dollars to the CRA in order to accomplish some projects, which wasn't paid back for several years until the CRA started generating revenue. For the last several years, the CRA has been able to generate revenue in order to repay that advance, so this is the next installment of that advance, which we made from the CRA. So are there any questions on our revenue summary before I jump into the next slide?
No, I'll stay in.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mayor. So let's jump into what we talked about early on in the year as far as our strategic initiatives during our strategic planning session. So, let's jump into what we talked about early on in the year as far as our strategic initiatives during our strategic planning session. As I mentioned, during May, and May is this year, we went through the strategic planning process where the City Council got together for several hours in one morning and talked about strategic initiatives and how we need to move the city forward. We take those strategic initiatives and try to incorporate those into our current year budget, which is our FY '26 budget, as well as our five-year and 10-year capital plan. So, in no particular order, the strategic priorities that came out of this year's planning process were Independence Lane, which we've been talking about for several years. We have 100% construction plans done. Construction manager is on board. We already had our first pre-construction conferences on that. So, we're expecting that to move forward as far as construction within, excuse me, the next several months. Next is the library in Quinnsdale Park, and the City Council has been kept up to date on what's been going on with the library and park project. The last meeting we had with the architects and engineers, they were essentially done with the site work and the architectural aspects of it, and we're digging into all the building and fire control requirements and the nuts and bolts of the building as we move forward to 100% construction plans, which are expected to be completed by the end of the year, with construction beginning in the first quarter of FY, first quarter of calendar year 2026. Walkability trails, sidewalks have been a priority for the last eight years from a strategic planning standpoint. We made great strides in this field as we move forward with our sidewalk and trail construction programs. Just over the last year, we completed a significant chunk of the sidewalk network in the Donrick Hills area to tie back into the middle school and Donrick Elementary School, along with the boardwalk replacements at the Community Park and along Lake Avenue. And the largest project we have right now is the completion of the East-West Connector Trail, which is that segment from the base of the bridge over I-4 on the west side over to Keller Road, which is going to complete our East-West Connector Trail. So, we'd be able to move from the far east side of the city to the west city limits on state streets or grid separated trails to keep our bikes and pedestrians safe. And we'll continue to move forward with that program as I'm going to touch base as we talk about our recommended budget in 2026. The largest phase of our step-to-sewer conversion has been completed and is open to be connected into for the Donrick Hills area. The next piece of that would be along Mayo Avenue, which is included in our five-year capital plan. So, we'll be moving forward with that, sort of as I said, to the 2026 budget, but it is in our five-year capital plan. And we are under a state mandate to get the entire city converted from step-to-to-sewer over the next 20 years. All that's important, especially important since COVID hit, was to address employee retention and recruiting. We've done a really good job of that over the last three years. Three years ago, as we were having the same discussion, we had 30% of our positions vacant, 25% in police and fire, which put a great deal of stress on those two departments. Since then, we've completed a classification and compensation study that has addressed salaries and benefits to make us more competitive with the surrounding jurisdictions and the private sector in Central Florida. So, I'm happy to report that as of a few weeks ago, our vacancy rate was less than 10%, and we have 100% of our positions full in the police and fire departments. So, we've made great strides in employee retention and recruitment over the last several years. Although not included in the general fund budget, addressing areas of flooding were important, especially on the heels of Hurricane Ian or Cape Stark, the evidence of some areas of flooding in the city. Those have been re-prioritized in the stormwater fund, and so we're moving forward with the design of those initial projects. Right now, all of those are included in the five-year capital plan. And last but not least is repair and replacement of aging infrastructure. A chunk of this is included in the general fund budget from a facility standpoint and a road paving standpoint. A lot more money is included in our utility funds with water, wastewater line replacement and water line replacement, sewer line lining, and stormwater pipe replacement and lining. So, we adjust all strategic priorities, if not in the FY '26 budget, it's certainly included within the five-year capital plan. Any questions on strategic planning?
I don't see any.
Okay, let's jump to the next slide then. This is our recommended budget for FY 2026. When we were initially presented the budget, we were about a half million dollars out of balance. So, although we had about 3.5% increase in taxable value citywide, this, as I remind you, is coming off a year that we had a 2% decrease in absorb values due to the local act and adjustments on the west side. Because of the 3.5% increase in taxable value, our golf app rate is 4.8737 mils. The post-budget is based on maintaining our current millage rate of 5.0465. And just to give you some perspective, over the last 10 years, we've averaged 8% to 10% increases. So, it's a little bit of a challenge this year, you know, compared to last year, our 2% decrease. Most cities and counties in Central Florida saw between 8% and 15% increase in their absorb revenues last year. We saw a 2% decrease. This year, again, the average throughout Central Florida was about 8%, while we're looking under 12%. So, this is still a challenging year budgetarily for us. But we're still being able to put together a plan that will show progress to our residents and addressing all of our strategic priorities. There's also, as I mentioned last slide or two slides ago, there is a $2 million payback for the general fund from CRA, which brings advanced funds to the CRA. When we talked at the initial budget workshop about how to overcome the deficit, the half million dollar deficit in the general fund, there are a couple options that are always available to the City Council. First is to raise the millage rate. You can also borrow from fund ballots to ballots on the operational side, although we don't like to do that. We like to use our general revenues to fund year over year and not dip into our savings account. We could adjust our allocated expenses, and cut the budget even further than we already have. And we've traditionally been very conservative in the City of Bayland when it comes to budgetary issues. We run a pretty convenient budget. So, with wages in Central Florida still being fairly high and unemployment being low, we're still dealing with inflationary effects over the last few years. And even with that, cost of construction had outpaced inflation, and we do have a fairly aggressive capital plan, as you show in the slide, which I'll go over in a second. So, and our capital purchases are still high, so we still have materials and equipment that need to be purchased. So, the direction that we received from the City Council was to adjust our allocations, our allocated expenses in CRA and stormwater funds that were commensurate with other funds to balance the budget. And that's the budgets being presented to you tonight. This is not to say, as I said, that we're not moving forward on the capital side. We had a pretty aggressive capital plan laid out for 2026. We have the Mainland Avenue, where Horatio Avenue masked our traffic signal that we're moving forward with. Thank you to Representative Smith and Senator Broder for sponsoring that. They gave us significant help with some legislative funding on that, just allowed that project to move forward in 2026. We have the design for the Minnehaha Park boardwalk, much like the Community Park boardwalk. They're built at about the same time, they're in similar condition. So, we're going to be doing the design for that to replace that in 2027. We have our Sainsbury Road repainting project, it's included in this budget. We also have the Art History Center Chapel stabilization, which we've gotten the bids back from that, so the chapel stabilization will be moving forward. After chapel stabilization is complete, continue to budget funds for stabilization of the entire site. So, that's going to be an ongoing project, as we talked about, the footers for much of the perimeter wall and some of the structures, we're certainly going to meet today's code, so stabilization is required throughout the site. So, that's going to be an ongoing project for the next several years. We also have the Library of Quinnsdale Park construction, which I mentioned on the last slide, as well as Independence Lane. The Silverman project that we're moving forward on design with this year is the Donrick Drive-Lake of Woods Creek design. That is where Donrick Drive dives down and crosses the bridge over Lake of Woods Creek, excuse me. In that situation, we have water overtopping the road there, and that's one of those intersections where we have flooding issue that affected strong property owners. It also affected one of our main lift stations, Lift Station Number Two, that's adjacent to the creek there. So, it inundated that lift station, causing environmental issues with discharge into that Minnehaha. So, this rose to a top priority from a flooding standpoint because it's at the intersection between a flooding issue, public safety issue, and access to the Oaks neighborhood and a sewer slip station issue. So, that design is moving forward, that design moves forward, we'll be moving into construction as soon as that's done. We also have the Police Department roof replacement, which again, thank you to Representative Smith and Senator Broder for providing that legislative funding to be able to advance this project. So, so we have a pretty aggressive capital program moving forward. I guess I jumped over the Mohican Trail sidewalk, along with the water line replacement that's going to be going on with along Mohican Road, growing that portion of that five years ago. We're going to finish that project as soon as our contractor mobilizes from the sewer project at the church to be able to provide a lay-down yard for that. We're going to be doing that water line project in conjunction with that water line project. We're going to be doing the connector from Dellerain, sidewalk connector from Dellerain Drive down to Thistle Lane, which is that last connector along Mohican, which is one of our busier roads. In conjunction with the sidewalk, we're also redesign, we'll be reconstructing the intersection of Mohican Trail and Dellerain Drive to tighten that up. Right now, I think everybody knows that's a wide intersection that cars tend to roll through. So, you have the intersection there with cars moving through that are rolling to the stop sign, as well as children walking and biking in those sidewalks that make it one of the more dangerous intersections in the neighborhood. So, we're going to be tightening that up to make it a safer intersection, easier for students and pedestrians to cross there as I move down to these schools. So, that, any questions on what we're going to be doing with the recommended budget for 2026?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next slide. This is what the state cap looks like for the recommended millage rate of 5.0465. The combined total millage rate using the budget is 5.2425, which is 0.006 mils less than last year. Because you remember, we have debt service mileage, and as property values increase, it allows us to lower that debt service mileage for a total combined rate of 5.2485, which is 110% lower than last year. So, we're actually lowering the millage rate when you combine the millage rates from last year to this year. At 5.2425 mils, with taxable value of approximately a half million dollars, we pay a little over $2,600 in operating and debt mileage. Just for your information, each mill generates $4 million to the general fund and almost $400,000 to our community redevelopment agency here. Any questions on our millage rates, what we're recommending?
No.
Okay, then moving on to our requested actions or motions. By Florida statute, we are required to take each one of these motions individually and have a vote on each one. So, and it's important that they be read verbatim. So, with that, if you have any questions that I can answer, we can move into the motion or actually the public period in first, I'm there.
Okay. I don't see any questions up here on this, so let's open up the public comment period. Does anybody in the public have any comment on the proposed millage rate? Okay, I see, seeing none, let's close the public comment period. Is there any discussion about the millage rate?
No, I think we've kind of really gone through the process. I think we've answered, asked all the questions and had all the questions answered for us. It's nice to see that, really, we even did a cut to the budget, so.
Yeah.
Cut to the millage.
The millage, yeah.
Okay. Well, as we know, there is a very particularized order in verbiage for each of the motions, so anybody?
I'm happy to read them here.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, first motion, to move to adopt the tentative operating millage for the fiscal year 2026 as 5.0465, which is 3.55% higher than the rollback rate of 4.8737.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, second. In a second. Well, let Laura choose which one she wants to see.
Councilmember Shane.
Councilmember Shane, second. Okay, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember Shane?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Randall?
Aye.
Mayor Lannister?
Aye.
Oh, great. And having seen that, I will make another motion, the second motion in this order, to move to adopt the tentative voted debt millage rate for the fiscal year of 2026 as 0.1960 for a combined total of 5.2425 mils.
Okay, second. Move the motion in a second?
I think you combined two and three. I think that you started with wording to three, and skip back to two, so I think you might have.
No, move to adopt the tentative voted debt.
Proposed, I think is the word there, advance.
Huh?
Proposed, who said the proposed voted debt, or are you getting tentative from?
Well, he's reading it on this.
I'm reading on this.
Oh, we've got it on paper, we're reading on the screen.
It's different on the screen.
It's reading in the paper.
Oh, well, I like my motion.
Sorry.
Is there a difference?
Let's see, move to adopt tentative operated millage rate. Second is move to adopt tentative voted debt millage rate. It's the proposed versus tentative, and I think probably proposed is more accurate.
Okay, then I will, with a friendly, with a friendly amendment, I will change it to move to set, my motion is move to set the proposed voted debt millage rate for fiscal year 2026, tax year at 0.1960 for a combined total of 5.2425 mils.
Okay, so we have the motion with the.
Motion is second.
In a second, from Councilmember Shane. Any discussion? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Shane?
Aye.
Councilmember Randall?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Mayor Lannister?
Aye.
And we have two more parts of this than the third part. I would make a motion to move to adopt the tentative budget for the general fund in the amount of $42,205,000.
Okay. Motion is second, by Councilmember Randall. Laura, would you call the roll?
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Randall?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember Shane?
Aye.
Mayor Lannister?
Aye.
Okay, one more, Joe.
Yeah, in the last part of this, for the part, I make a motion to move to set the date, time, and place for the public hearing on the proposed tax increase in the budget for fiscal year 2025-26 as Monday, September 22, 2025, at 6:30 PM here in the Maitland City Hall council chambers.
Second. Motion is second by Councilmember Randall. Laura, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Randall.
Aye.
Councilmember French.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanie.
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Aye.
Mayor Lantz.
Aye.
Okay, we have the doubt of the resolution. We're all in old business, and I'm sure, Shannon, would you like to take this, or do you?
Sure, there's no old business tonight, Mayor, I think you.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody in the council wish to remove the item from the consent agenda? Move, all right. Same reason in the public, have any comments on consent agenda items two through seven? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public comment period, any motion will be in order.
I make a motion to approve consent agendas presented.
I second.
Okay, motion is second, Laura, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Shanie.
Aye.
Councilmember Randall.
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilmember French.
Aye.
Mayor Lantz.
Aye.
Okay, now we're on the public period, which is the time when anybody in the public who has any items to bring up to the council, is welcome to come and talk to us, somebody from the public like to address the council tonight? Stacy? Evan?
Not this.
Okay, we'll close the public period, and we're on to decisions. First, reading ordinance number 1448. Laura, would you please read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number 1448, ordinance of the city of Maitland, Florida, granting not to exempt certain property under Florida statute section 196.19783D1A, commonly referred to as the live local act property tax exemption, pursuant to authority provided in Florida statute section 196.19783O, providing for complex and providing for severability and setting an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Shannon, would you collect it?
Thank you.
There is the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in 2023, the live local act is passed into law, and this bill created a new exemption from ad morum taxation for certain multifamily properties that contain more than 70 units that were used to provide affordable housing for either people or families who were meeting extremely low to moderate income levels. During the 2024 legislation that was passed by the legislature, the bill amended that section of the statutes to allow taxing authorities, including cities such as Maitland, to opt out of the exemption, and this can be done via approval of an ordinance or resolution approved by two-thirds vote of the governing body. These taxing authorities can only opt out of this taxation if they're in a metropolitan statistical area, NSA, that has a greater number of affordable and available units than the number of rental properties that are in the 0% to 120% area median income. And this is according to the most recent Schimper Center survey, a copy of that was provided in the agenda packet, and at the end, on page 32, it does note that the city of Maitland falls into the Orlando vicinity NSA. And so ordinance 1448 contains a finding that the Orlando vicinity NSA does qualify for the opt-out, and directs the Orange County Property Appraiser not to grant any exemptions between January 1 of 2026 and January 1 of 2028. This is in accordance with the statute. By law, this ordinance requires a two-thirds vote, as previously mentioned, and we did make sure that this was appropriately advertised, scheduled for publication on September 12, and second reading, council approves first reading this evening, will be on September 22. There have been a variety of legal interpretations regarding the statute, as well as publication requirements, that are in Chapter 50 Florida statutes. Working with our city attorneys, we've agreed that the adoption of both the resolution, which was done in the consent agenda, as well as the ordinance will position the city in the best position for any potential legal challenges. Also, in order for the exemption to remain in effect, the local legislation should be adopted annually, as long as Orange County exceeds the requirements for affordable housing in the region, and that's by that same Schimper central report. So the legislation requires that you look at the most recent annual report, hence the need to come back on an annual basis. So this ordinance does not affect any exemptions that were already voluntarily granted prior to the adoption of this policy, and additionally, adoption of this ordinance does not prohibit live local or affordable housing projects from developing, rather in opt-out of providing the ad morum tax exemption to such projects. The staff recommends city council approve ordinance 1448, opting out of live local ad morum tax exemption as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Does anybody have any questions on this?
No, I just have to say that report was eye-opening as far as the real estate in the state of Florida, in particular our area, but it did draw a lot of information out as far as how many people actually live in the state of Florida, have homesteaded property versus a lot of rental property, investment property, so appreciate that information.
All right, does anyone in the public like to address the side? Let's open up the public comment period for this. Okay, seeing none, let's close the public comment period.
Okay, I'll do another, I'm happy to make a motion there.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1448, chapter 196.1978, live local opt-out ad velorum tax exemption as presented.
Okay, motion.
I'll second.
In the second, okay, Laura, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember French.
Aye.
Councilmember Randall.
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanie.
Aye.
Mayor Lantz.
Aye.
Okay, first reading taken care of, we have another first reading, ordinance number 1449. Laura, would you please read the ordinance title?
Ordinance 1449, and ordinance of the city of Maitland, Florida, granting coastal waste and recycling in a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of waste within the city of Maitland, Florida, outlining franchise's duties and providing for terms and conditions under which such franchise will operate, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Shannon, would you like to introduce the side?
Thank you, Mayor. Since July 2013, the city has held an exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Pro of Florida for the collection of single and multifamily residential solid waste, as well as yard waste, bulk waste, and recycling and commercial solid waste. It does exclude construction and demolition, or C and D materials, and the city regulates this non-exclusive franchise through city code instead. So this non-exclusive franchise program enables residents and businesses to obtain competitive pricing for C and D removal services, while the city still retains a level of oversight to ensure the haulers are properly licensed, that they're insured, and that they're qualified to provide the services within our city limits. So hauling by residents and contractors in the C and D degree is not regulated. So haulers who would like to provide C and D removal services within the city have to submit an application and require documentation that's outlined within the city code, and must be adopted with the ordinance in accordance with our city charter. So you've seen these in the past, this is no different. This agreement was drafted by the city attorney's office and is used for all of the haulers that wish to do business within the city limits. The coastal waste and recycling has completed their application, they've submitted all the documentation required under our city code, and they're qualified to provide the C and D degree removal services. They are located in Orlando, they've been in business since 2017, and they currently provide 12 roll-off trucks to transport material for their clients, and they'd like to do business within the city of Maitland. The staff has recommended city council approve ordinance 1449, granting a non-exclusive franchise agreement on first reading.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Anybody have any questions on this, on the controversial ordinance? Okay, anybody in the public have any comment on the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public comment period, and if there's no further discussion, motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion on first reading to approve ordinance number 1449, non-exclusive C and D franchise agreement, coastal waste and recycling.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, Laura, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Randall.
Aye.
Councilmember French.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanie.
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Aye.
Mayor Lantz.
Aye.
Okay, we are through with decisions for this evening, let's go into reports. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report?
No sir.
No sir? Okay. Shannon, anything from the State Editor's Office?
Sure, the only thing we'd just like to let council know, and you probably saw this in an email that went out individually last week, is that the Orange County Redistricting Committee met and recommended two maps to the Board of County Commissioners to be presented on September 16. The tentative public hearing is scheduled for October 14, and is provided in the mayor's letter of endorsement from MAP 1A. That is amended, and a slightly amended version of the OPHAN 1 map that city council had authorized previous council meetings, so that is one of the two maps with a slight modification that's moving forward right now, and Mayor, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add, we did provide that documentation to the redistricting committee.
Yeah, it sounds like it's up to the county commissioner now, so it's out of the hands of the advisory committee, yeah, so I think.
Mayor, I did watch the Winter Park City Council meeting last week, week and a half ago, and they were pretty much saying the same way we were, is, you know, we want to keep Maitland, Eatonville, and Winter Park together, and that it's better for us because it gives us more of a say than we would if we were part of a rural, you know, section of the county. So, I know they did, I've heard from Eatonville, they're also want to keep with that, Maitland and Eatonville and Winter Park together, so it's going to be interesting. So I did see, yeah, I think that one of those maps have us three together, and then the other one is separate.
Yes.
Has Winter Park on the far side.
Right.
Do you know if Winter Park or Eatonville submitted a letter of support the way we did?
I think Winter Park might have done that, but I think they also sent somebody out there from the city to voice.
Yeah, Winter Park did, and, yeah, I'm not sure about Eatonville, but they asked for us to, I mean, for the second round, we had the initial letter, and then they had more meetings in there to nail further, Winter Park.
When I looked at the new map, the only thing I really saw was that it shifted some of that to the south, the Winter Park in Orlando, out to the west, to Pine Hills, so the bulk of what I think we were concerned about is in that map.
Right, right. Yeah, a little bit interesting to see how that discussion unfolds, I guess we can talk to our county commissioners, if we're interested in pressing that further. I don't know if we, I mean, it kind of, we're through the committee process now, do we want to send a similar letter to the county commission, or do we just review the record and put our letter in it? Is there any decision there?
I would, I, if it was up to me, I'd say kind of send another one updated a little bit.
I second that.
Yeah.
Because it's changed, I mean, you know, it's, it's a different set of options, it's narrowed down now, and it was the slight revision, so I think it would be good to clarify our position, or reaffirm our support for the 21 with the slight revision. I just want to thank the mayor for the letter, appreciate that, about as well.
Yeah, I read. Okay, anything else here, or is that?
No, sir.
That's it, okay. Anybody on council have anything?
I will say that I am finishing up my duty as Edgewater High School 1985 reunion member, so we're having it this weekend, and to keep true of the love of Maitland, we're holding it at Sheraton here in Maitland, yep, and we'll have a little event.
Is there a warning?
Ah, I don't know. So Chief, just so you know, keep working back, but, no, it's going to be a great weekend. Edgewater plays Jones, and Jones is in football, Jones is number two in the state, Edgewater's number 12, and they're one and two in the county, and they're already rivals, so it's going to be a game, and it's already sold out, so.
Where are they at?
Edgewater. So, and then we'll have a little festivity at Holly's, but, yes, so it's going to be exciting times if you're by, you know, any of those pop in and say, hey, but, yeah, it's good.
Excellent.
Forty years.
Yeah. And you're still serving.
Yeah, I'm still serving.
All right.
Still feel good.
Anybody else?
Well, just to add, so you've got an envelope here, I'll do the old Carneck thing. October 9, 10 AM, groundbreaking for the new art center school, so it's been about five years in coming, and I think they're on their last pursuit to get the permits, but I think this is going to be a great addition to Maitland, especially the art center. The architects done a great job, again, a lot of people involved in the design of it, some pro-bone though, so anyway, hope everybody can make it out to that.
A question for you, is this something, you know, that they're going to want us to take, like, some pictures, helping pull the ribbon or anything?
I have no idea what they're planning that day.
Yeah. Ringo, we got some back here, so.
Laura will check one out, I'm sure, to you.
Yeah, we've got a few of them around here.
Clean. Repaying.
All right, does it work any?
No, sir.
Okay, Scott, good. All right, well, then we stand adjourned, thank you for coming out.